I guess we're good, right?
We're good.
Okay.
So, we're going to transition into our capital improvement program, talk about both water and sewer projects and our street projects. As a lead in to that, prepared just really a high level overview of how we are funding our street projects and our water and sewer projects. And so, want to run through that with you before we get into greater detail. So, on the street improvement program, we have established what we call Fund 15 to hold. It's a special fund that holds money for our street improvement program. Looking back through the past few years, back in 2016 is when we established this fund. And at the time, we put in about $150,000 into Fund 15, not very much. That won't get you too far now with with street improvements, but it was a start for us. City Council at the time, of course, wanted to start funding street projects. It was shortly thereafter that we also used our CDBG funds to fund about $1.5 million worth of street work. So, we were able to accomplish that as well. In 2017, that number went up to 175,000. And then, as we renegotiated our electrical rates with TCAP, we were able to take all of the savings from general fund and utility fund and dump that into the Fund 15 for street projects. That's really when we got our first kind of big infusion into into Fund 15. And that equated about $670,000, starting in fiscal 18. Last year, as you'll recall, we took our property tax rate up to the rollback rate, which generated another $275,000 in revenue. And the direction from council was to put that into the street program. So, that added another 275 and brought us up to almost a million dollars, $950,000 in Fund 15 annually, which is excellent. Street, street, street. So, where does that go? This is basically a breakdown of generally where that $950,000 is going to go in the next fiscal year. And then, I'll talk about some goals we have to increase our annual pavement work. So, of the 950,000, a little over 400,000 of that's going to go toward annual pavement work. So, this is either micro paving or mill and overlay work on streets that need new pavement. We have set aside $67,000 for our sidewalk improvements. That $67,000 number comes from being 10% of the original amount that we had put into Fund 15, 670,000. So, of course, council adopted a sidewalk program to keep, to direct those funds as far as where they're going. And then, $470,000 of the 950 is going to go towards paying, making bond payments on the $7.2 million issuance that we're going to do later this year. So, that's basically where the $950,000 go. Looking forward, we've kind of made a goal to get the annual pavement work amount up to five, up to half a million dollars by fiscal '22. I would love to do that next year, just not sure how how the budget's going to look from that perspective. So, to get us to half a million dollars and then also to pay for the next round of major street improvements, the design of those, and that would be Crawford Street and Edwards Drive, we need to infuse another 367,000 into Fund 15 to accomplish that. And long term, really would like to establish a goal to get the annual pavement work up to a million dollars a year by 2025. Gives us several years of continued economic growth to start diverting more money into Fund 15. And really, the purpose of that, as you'll recall, when we started our our street initiative, our street improvement program in 2016, we did a survey of all the streets in Dennison and assigned a pavement condition index number to each street. And I think our, what was our average number at the time? It was in the 50s? And I think we said we want to get up into the 60s. It's going to take well over a million dollars in annual pavement work to get us, to get us up to that number. We are going to survey the streets again and look at what changes have been made, see where that average is at, and also purchase some software that's going to allow us to plug in the work that's been done and auto generate what our overall number is. So, using some data, we really want to guide our our street improvement efforts moving forward, but want to infuse some more cash into our annual pavement work in the future. Our water and sewer improvement program, as far as how we approach funding that, it's pretty straightforward each year. And this started six years ago. We, for the first five years of our Water Sewer CIP, we, council approved a resolution that established rates that would increase each year and allow us to issue bonds for projects. We started another five-year period last year in September 2019 with a new resolution adopting new rates, which are shown here, reflected in, just in some different sample bills for residential and commercial usage. Renee's going to kind of dig into the rates with you here in just a minute and refresh your memory of what those are going to look like moving forward. Each year in December, the new water and sewer rates kick in and generate enough revenue for us to issue bonds, usually which we do in the first or second quarter of each year for the projects. So, that's kind of generally how we're approaching paying for our infrastructure improvements. Pass it to Renee. You saying I'm dirty?
All right. Water sewer rates, water sewer rate history. Dennison continues to face an unprecedented capital improvements initiative with water and utilities. This initiative, of course, like Judd said, began back in fiscal year 2014, six years ago. Rates were set at that time for a five-year period to cover cost of capital improvement plan from 2015 through 2019, as well as increases to the variable rates to cover our MNO costs, our maintenance and operation in our water and sewer utility fund, operating fund. Rates were set again in September 2019 for a five-year period to cover costs for capital improvement plan and maintenance and operation costs for 2020 through 2024. The average yearly bond amount for the previous five years, 2014 through 2019, was about 5.4 million. The anticipated average yearly bond amount for 2014 and 2024 is 8.2 million. And we could probably use a whole lot more than that. But for these initiatives, occurred through rate increases. And even with the rates that we adopted back in September last year, we remain competitive with these increases. And we'll look at some comparisons here shortly. So, right here, we have our base rates and pay for our bonds. And so, here you see where we're anticipating issuing 4.5 million this year. And then, 8.1 million in 2021, 9.2 in 2022, 23 we're anticipating issuing almost 9.4, and then almost 9.8 in 2024, for a total of a little over 41 million for the next five years for utilities. Variable rates for water and sewer, these go towards our operating expenses, our maintenance operations. And this is, I do five-year projections, and so, these are kind of five-year projections of maintenance operation costs based on some calculations that I put into place for the next five years. And those increases will cover those costs. Here are comparison cities that you saw when we were talking about property tax and sales tax. And so, here's comparison cities with us, based on residential 5 and 10,000 gallons and then commercial 50 and 200,000 gallons. You'll notice on these next slides that we're not even average yet. We're still below average on our rates. Here is the residential 5,000 gallons, here's the residential 10,000 gallons, and commercial 50,000 gallons. And we're in the green, of course, and then the commercial 200,000 gallons here. When you compare us, our current rates, this is what we put in place December 2019 because our rates are effective each December. You have Dennison, residential 5,000 gallons, 69, 69. TML city averages for 2020, and these are for cities with population between 20 and 25,000. She is at 76, 70. And then, if you take those peer cities from those pages before, their average is $78 for that same usage. Residential 10,000 gallons, we're at 97, 44. Average is 116, and peer city averages is 135. Commercial, 50,000 gallons, we're at 447. TML city averages, across the space, 555. And peer cities is about 760. Commercial 200,000 gallons, we're at 1572. TML city averages at 2130, and peer cities at 260. Here's the rates, I think we talked about these earlier, the capital improvement program. These are the rates that will take care of our bonds. We anticipate taking care of bonds based on the way the bonds are structured right now and our maintenance operation based on the five-year projections. And this kind of shows you each year as they go up for residential 5,000, 10,000, commercial 50 and 200,000, what those rates would look like each December based on that usage. Any questions?
Is it my turn? Jimmy? We did change the order of these slides a little bit. I'm trying to find the page number that we're on now. In your booklet, if you go to page 90, or sorry, 47, that's where we'll pick up these next few.
Everybody there? Well, good morning, mayor and council. We've been talking taxes and numbers and rates and whatnot. Let's just talk about some of the things we get to do with that. So, Public Works has been very busy. And obviously, we're very thankful for the amount of money and projects we get to do to better the city. So, it's really a great program. So, I'm going to start with the project updates on our completed projects. I'll go through these rather quickly. Our sanitary line improvements that was completed, that's our SSO, sanitary sewer overflow initiative. We partner with TCEQ. That allows us a little bit of grace when we come to these overflows because we do the proper things. Also, the, we just signed and got another agreement with them. So, we're going to be in an agreement with TCEQ for additional eight years. That just got approved a couple of months ago. The 2017 water lines that you see there, improvements, that was actually 6,220 feet of upsized 8-inch PVC water line. And basically, what it is, it improve volume, water quality, and fire protection for numerous streets. That's a little bit over a mile of pipeline that was installed by blocks. Fire drainage is working well. I don't think it's ran over the roadway since that's been installed. We've had pretty good rains. So, I think that's going to be a sufficient project. We're kind of worried about the drainage, but I think it's going to be fine. Wastewater transfer switch, that is a transfer switch that goes from Encore Power to our diesel generator. They're very expensive. They respond within milliseconds, power outages, or voltage variances. We had one at Duck Creek, it's the same way. It did get replaced with the Snyder Energy Project, if y'all remember that, back in about 14 or 15. And so, the one at Paw Paw failed, so we had to get a new transfer switch updated with all the, all the new bells and whistles. Those original switches were installed in 1988, so they were well dated. Our ongoing systems improvements, it's water and sewer, we're very grateful for that. Leanne's very thankful. And we do a lot of water main and sewer main extensions for new growth, for repairs, rehab and repair. You know, as Judd says, we do have failing infrastructure, very aged infrastructure, and we deal with that quite a bit. We have collapsed manholes, and that's, we take care of that with that fund. And also with that, we also did 104 water and sewer taps the past 12 months for either growth or repairs. The water plant clarifier number two, that was just a maintenance. It's a metal structure that's inside of a concrete tank. And all that metal was repaired and built back up. And then, of course, got a fresh coat of epoxy coating. And so, basically brought it back up to almost a new condition. The Caterpillar lift station, we upsized that. We've got brand-new pumps, a brand-new control, brand-new covers, brand-new piping. Upsized the pump to three inches. And the funny thing about that station is the city of Dennison did not know we had that station. It was put in in the 1970s and somewhere around, going back to the history of '78 or '79, the city got a phone call and said, hey, something's wrong with your lift station. And so, from that point forward, we've been taking care of Caterpillar lift station. So, and it pumps to, across the golf, the golf course, the old closed golf course of Grayson County College to NTRA. Just a small, little bitty station. Caterpillar's the only one that's on it. Our water and wastewater master plans, it's one of the greatest things the city's ever done. Our last update was in 1980. That drives a lot of our projects, a lot of our CIP projects that y'all will see. It gives us direction what we're going to need to have in the future, five, 10, 15, 20 years out. We use it regularly, and it's, and it's great for critical planning. And some projects we'll talk about here late in a minute, was that's some of the projects that we're getting out of these master plans. And what we're doing is reworking mostly with the water right now, and we're going to have a far better system. And the big beauty for me is the 16-inch Teresa water line, phase one, that is from FM 691 to Flowers Drive, that is in service. We are feeding it with two 8-inch lines from Flowers until we get the phase two built that we're out to bid for now. That was 9,804 feet long. And it also, the great thing about it for us is we have now three feeds to TMC, to the hospital. So, that makes us sleep a whole lot better at night. We're very comfortable with that. So, we've been on the books for a long, long time to get that done, and we finally got it done, and very thankful.
I was just going to add real quick, Jimmy, on that system improvements line that you see in there. It's not a, not a huge amount. I think it's 600-plus thousand. But each year, we, we put some money in the CIP towards sort of just discretionary system improvements. And a lot of that money goes towards extending water and sewer lines on some of our established neighborhoods to vacant lots that builders are going to build on. What happened as Dennison developed is that, you know, say a neighborhood has a, a street, and it kind of goes up in elevation. The city at the time never extended water and sewer lines, you know, to connect both sides of this, both ends of the street. And so, you have vacant lots with no utilities on them. Well, if we're ever going to build on those lots, we've got to extend the water and sewer lines. And so, while it's sort of a lost leader when it comes to the investment we put to get utilities there, ultimately, it's never going to be built on if we don't extend the water and sewer lines. So, that's been a huge improvement and something I shared with our local builders yesterday when we met with them, that we want to continue to do that to make sure that lots can be freed up and built on. So, so we get affordable housing, redevelop our neighborhoods, and that sort of ties in with our overall neighborhood revitalization efforts.
And what goes hand in hand with that, some of these lots that these folks are going, obviously, Judd talks about the low-hanging fruit, then the high-hanging fruit. The low-hanging fruit with the lots are pretty much gone. Now, it's a difficult lot.
Yeah.
And so, we work as a team to make that happen. So, sometimes it's, you have to be crafty because, you know, you're not going to move Mother Earth's terrain very easily. Okay. Ongoing projects. Texoma Pump Station. We have been working with the Corps. I did receive 30% design plans for the station. That station will be rated at 25 million gallons a day for future expansion to 30 million gallons a day. They have a far outlive, all of us in 100 years of Dennison will be safe with ample supply of water. And that's, not many cities can say that, that they don't have to worry about their water availability. It's a big, it's a big product. The Corps did a switcheroo on us. They changed the mitigation plan and had the plumber, the engineers get right back on it. And they got on it, they evaluated the new site that they wanted. Whenever you do a core project on federal land, you have to replace basically what you were going to tear out in the easements with trees and growth. So, the mitigation plan changed. We're in the process now, met with the engineers this week. We're going to meet with the Corps and get them to nail down that that is for sure the end of any possible changes. We're going to get a letter of commitment because we're right at the end where they're about to issue the permit, and we don't want any more hiccups like we just received. So, because we handled that, and we just want to get ready with them and just so we can move forward when time comes. There's a long ways down the road, but you know, time gets, gets by us and it'll be here before we know it. Secondary splitter box at Paw Paw, that existing splitter box is attached to a metal clarifier that directs flow to two different clarifiers. Metal clarifiers were installed in 1988. Everything in the wastewater plant at that time, at any time should all be concrete, but the city did not have the money. So, the metal tanks were obviously failing, being in the conditions and the adverse atmosphere that they work in every day. So, and it's 24/7 operations, it never stops. So, we're going to design and build a concrete splitter box where we can make proper repairs. And at some point in time, we'll be using that because at some point in time, we'll have to upgrade the size of Paw Paw plant. And because of the growth, we are currently at 50% capacity at Paw Paw. At least to always be around 30, 35%. So, we're definitely seeing the growth. Teresa water line, phase two, it's going to attach to the phase one. It's a 16-inch water line. It's going to go from Flowers to Brock. That's where the connection, the real connection that's going to feed all the way from Brock to 691 will be off an 18-inch line that's actually under Brock. So, we'll have more than enough ample water supply. And then, we also, I don't think we're going to disconnect the eights, which is, yeah. So, it will be triple fed. You'll have two eights and an 18th, being that interceptor that goes across, across country. And we had a pre-bid meeting, and it's out to bid right now. We had probably about 20 folks at the pre-bid meeting, which is a good sign. And the engineer said that about 60 plants have been picked up from CivCast. And that's essentially double than what we normally see. So, definitely people are interested in doing work, and a lot of, a lot of growing is going on through the state of Texas for sure.
When are those bids due, Jimmy?
July, July 7th, yes. The iron ore truck sewer project, interceptor, the new 30-inch upgrade is going well. We're finally getting out of the flood plain. We're finally almost getting into some dry weather. We have had 88 rain days scheduled since that project started, noted. And that's, that's just an unfathomable number to think about. You know, essentially, three months of their time was rain. So, it's, but they're, they're still on schedule, and they're moving hard. But time will tell. But they're a good contractor, and it has not been an easy course when they're working in a flood zone when you have rain. Quarter-mile road water line, that's a water line that came out of our master plan. It's at 60% design. It's going to go from along 1417 to 691. It'd make connections there that will actually feed some surface areas that were kind of north of 691 that Charmin didn't have water lines to, and Dennison was feeding them water. And we were having pressure issues. So, essentially, with this extension, it's going to allow us to go east on 691 to get to the new tower. And then, also, it will feed the airport area where we don't have to rely so much on the old dilapidated water tower that's going to come down at some time, and all these projects are connected together. That's going to be one of our big, major projects out of the water master plan. And then, of course, with that, it's a new Grayson Tower. There will be a new Grayson Tower out at the college site. It'll be a little bit at a different location, it'll be closer to 691. And that way, we can get more elevation, but yet have a shorter tower. And it'll be on the same pressure plane as Parkdale. And what that's going to do is going to relieve all the hard, tense moments that we have in leaks or whatnot on the central pressure plane. Because we have 3 million gallons of storage at Parkdale, between the ground storage tank and the aerial tower. So, that gives us a lot of comfort level. And then, also, we have Randale Dam repairs. We're adding a, a design, we have to do some repairs to maintain the dam. We're actually going, we're adding a design now, and the goal is we're going to use some concrete. And what's, what's happening is when the waves are hitting on the dam, it's also undermining the concrete structure. So, we're going to put like a, I don't know, kind of like an apron of concrete where that will stop doing that damage. Moving forward to new projects, bigger projects. The new Grayson water tower spoke about, it is a CIP recommendation. It's going to be a, I've already kind of explained, it's going to be a shorter tower, but it'd be at a higher elevation, and that's a savings. I think the engineers, I'm not, I think I'm correct, it's like every foot you go up in a, in a water tower is an additional $80,000 of, of construction. So, any feet that you can shave off goes well, well noted. Duck Creek Interceptor, it's an interceptor like iron ore, it's just north of town, it has two lines. It's very old and dated, and it's collapsing in, and we fight with that structure. That used to be a wastewater plant. The good thing is, even though we're getting a lot of infiltration and inflow, the, we have storage out there that was the old wastewater plant. So, when we get in flood conditions, we can actually turn that station off and hold water to help relieve Paw Paw. Because Paw Paw can get up to 10 or 12 billion gallons of flow rather quickly. And that, it gets very difficult to maintain that kind of water when it's designed for 6 billion a day. So, we're addressing our I and I issues. Our risk and resilience program, but we're going to start that in January. That's a mandated, TCEQ and EPA mandated. What it is, you do a study to evaluate risk of harm to either your water or wastewater treatment either caused by man or natural causes. And then, the resiliency is the protocols to protect the system and citizens with that study. So, it's a two-fold system. And I'm incorrect, it is with the wastewater plant, too. Yeah. Water New Lane Street Utilities, that money is for a massive drainage area that when they're designing, Carrie will speak more of it, but I don't want to get into her territory. But that's a massive drainage. We were told that upfront, and it's, and that's why we're funding that. It's just that terrain, that creek there, the armage is so deep, it's going to, it's going to take a, it's going to be a wide drainage area. Main Street Improvements, that money is funded, we're replacing the utilities under the D, during the D3 project. And that just only makes natural good sense because everything will be brand-new under concrete streets. And we all will be thankful for that for many, many years. The iron ore pump station, as we're growing, we'll may need larger pumps or larger piping or even possible a new force main. I think we can upsize the station cheaper. The initial quote for the force main to pump from my, the iron ore station south of town to Paw Paw was at $12 million. So, that's going to, we, we'll do everything we can to make sure the, the, the station itself can be upgraded, will be better served. Seventh Street upgrade is 1,600 of 8-inch PVC, replacing 4-inch cast iron pipe. And it's from Texas to DeMarco is the plan. And we've got it worked in, we just got to get a timeline and make, you know, pandemic kind of shook things up. So, we're just kind of watching how our funds are. We have multiple repairs out there, we have water quality issues. And this will also allow for, obviously, all new fire flow. So, that's the big thing we push. And the Preston and Grayson water line, it's 10,950 feet. It's going to serve Preston Road from Paw Paw 12 to Grayson Drive to airport area. And it's basically for new development and growth, and it will supplement the Grayson Tower, the new Grayson Water Tower. So, all that area, there's a lot of folks out there that are moving and moving. So all that area, there's a lot of folks out there that are moving and moving and it's part of the annexation target. So we're trying to get the infrastructure in and and ready to go. And then last but not least, the SCADA, the water plant uses SCADA. SCADA is Supervisory Controlled Data Acquisition. Basically where you control your water plants or your wastewater plants with monitors and sensors and transducers and computers. The water plant has one that they they put in. It's a radio. It's very dated. The wastewater plant and lift stations have never had it with the well overdue. Most cities have these type of accesses and controls. Essentially where you could be remote and actually control your plant. So and who knows, maybe one day we can get to a point with all the technology that we don't have to have staff twenty-four seven. So we're just trying to get into the modern world. It's just, it's out there on the radar. We know it's there, but we know there's a lot more to do before we get all the the diamonds. With that being said, is there any questions? This is our five-year plan that we work with. Most of everything that I talked about was covered in here. And this five-year plan does match up with Renee's forty-one million dollars worth.
That's a good thing, Jimmy.
Yeah, oh yeah. Hey, I added it up and checked it. I said, I was checking it. It is right on, it's right on the penny. So this this proposed plan that you see here, this five-year plan, this is very, very fluid plan. It's always ever-changing and we have to move projects around, priorities come up, and it takes a team to do that. And so I'm very proud to be a part of that because this is really setting a direction for Dennison. You got to, you got to start with your infrastructure. And if you're doing that the correct way, be no regrets. So. If you see anything that you'd like questions about, all these are interrelated to water and wastewater master plan and city growth. And Carrie is the no lady. When I come ask her for money, she tells me no all the time.
I thought that was Renee.
And Renee, but Judd gets his money. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, with that being said, if there's not any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to us anytime. We're glad to help. And I'll have what's next on the agenda first. It is streets. I want to make sure y'all didn't shuffle it around too bad.
So jumping around a little bit, we're on fifty, be on page fifty-two now with streets.
I want to bring the lady to the clean. I'm not worried. It's all right. All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So streets, I joked with Renee before. I said, this is the same presentation with a little bit more updates that y'all heard from me for the last two years. So we'll we'll kind of breeze through it with some some additional information and some small changes due to some funding changes. So first off, our twenty twenty overlay program was completed in May, using approximately twenty-seven hundred tons of asphalt to overlay nineteen blocks, one parking lot and one alley. The total cost was about four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Staff is currently working, as Judd mentioned, to update all of our PCI scores for our streets. Since we took those in twenty fifteen, we've done a lot of major updates. And so we feel moving forward for the twenty twenty annual maintenance plan, we felt that it was necessary to go ahead and update those PCI scores. So we're making the best educated decision on which streets to choose for the twenty twenty-one overlay program. So that we should have those in the next three or four weeks and then we'll meet with the street subcommittee and get a plan together for the twenty-one annual maintenance program. More than likely, you'll see a little bit later, we're planning a micro pave due to the funding. We'll do the micro pave in twenty-one. So Flora Lane, this was our first street to tackle with construction. If anybody has taken a gander over there, it is a bit messy right now. Water and sewer has been installed for the most part. That began in April. And in July or August, well, they'll start on the storm drainage and then they'll start the paving. So they have to have a substantial completion by about March of twenty twenty-one, but we are a little bit ahead of schedule. So they are hopeful that they'll be able to finish before then. We have paired this with the CIP program as the CIP program covers the utilities for a total cost of about two point one million dollars for this for this street. Loy Lake, this was the, one of the first ones to be designed under the new bond program. And unfortunately, our design had to be put on hold because of COVID nineteen. But we are happy to say that we're going to begin the design again, probably late July, early August, when that funding becomes available again. We do have the money set aside in Fund fifteen, but with Flora beginning, kind of when we put a hold on a lot of our funds, we're making sure that we have funding available for Flora before we continue the designs of the additional streets. We did have the the public input meeting back in March before everything kind of shut down. And we received some great feedback from that meeting. And so we're, we've talked with the engineers a few times since then. And so we're taking into consideration all of those comments as well. Our plan as of right now is design should be completed in late twenty or early twenty-one with construction hopefully in mid twenty-one to begin for that project. Waterloo Lake Drive, it was kind of the same situation as Loy Lake where it was put on hold partially. With the Katy Trail going in there, we had to continue some design on the potential traffic circle that will go there because that shifted the alignment of the Katy Trail. And so we had to work with TechDOT and their contractor with the Katy Trail. And these engineers who are designing Waterloo Lake to make sure that the trail wasn't too close to the traffic circle and and all of those components. So they did, they did continue a little bit of design, but we'll give them the full go-ahead again at the end of July, early August and kind of the same construction timeline as Loy Lake to begin in mid to late twenty-one. The last two streets, these are pretty quick. We we did shift the design and the construction for Edwards. Originally, we had talked about designing in twenty-one, but we have pushed that to twenty-two because Loy Lake and Waterloo Lake Drive aren't happening as quickly as what we had anticipated. So we did push the design to twenty-two for Edwards and the construction to be in twenty-three as long as everything continues the way we plan right now. Same with Crawford. This is going to be quite a, quite a bigger project than Edwards. So this will more than likely take a little bit longer. But the drainage situation between Crawford and Edwards tie together, so they kind of have to be done in conjunction with each other. But the design for this one also got pushed to twenty-two. We figure the design for Crawford will take a little bit longer. And so we're still planning for the construction in twenty twenty-three for the second, hopefully the second round of bonds to be to be produced for Crawford and Edwards. So Judd talked a little bit about Fund fifteen, so I won't go into too many, too many details. But this is kind of a slide that shows the upcoming five years, kind of what we can plan for in the next five years for street maintenance. In twenty, there was no bond payment. So that bond payment that was, that we're, we'll be getting the funding for in September, that first bond payment won't hit until twenty-one. So you'll see that that is reflected in our twenty-one column. And then with the second round of bonds, that payment won't hit until twenty twenty-four. And so that's what we'll pay for Crawford and Edwards. So those are a couple of the changes to this program that we hadn't anticipated previously. And also there's that possible increase that Judd mentioned to get our annual maintenance up to about five hundred thousand dollars each year. So that that dollar amount changes a little bit each year depending on what else was happening with those bond payments. So for Fund fifteen in twenty twenty, again, I won't go into too much detail because Judd already has. But we had our total revenue. There was a little bit of carryover from previous years in this fund. So that's how we were able to spend a little bit more this year than what we will be able to in the future years. And so we had our street designs for about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which we anticipate to spend every, every penny of that and probably a little bit, a little bit more. The street and sidewalk twenty nineteen program, that was a leftover, carryover from last year. And that completed this year's project that we were not able to complete in twenty nineteen. So that was completed. And then we did the twenty twenty overlay for the street program. And we're looking to set aside about three hundred thousand dollars over the next two years to rebuild the seven hundred block of East Bullock. If if you haven't driven over there, it's a different experience on that street. It is about a one, one lane gravel slash rock potholes road. So that is one that has been on our radar for several years now that we have wanted to rebuild. We have to coordinate that with utilities as all of the utilities in that area need to be, need to be rebuilt before we can do the street as well. So we're working towards setting aside the money and hopefully in twenty twenty-one, we'll be able to start that rebuild of that street.
There's a bunch of new homes on that street too, right, Carrie?
Yes. And then the sidewalk program, this year, this current year, we we focus on homeowners and some city, city projects with that money. Next year, we, when we brought to council for approval, the new sidewalk program, we'll also open that up to business owners as well. So in twenty-one, our current plan is to kind of continue the the street maintenance program with a micro pave of about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And then the reconstruction of the seven hundred block of East Bullock. The sidewalk program, we have it kind of just placeholders for dollar amounts that what we think we'll spend for each one of those categories. Obviously, it's not anything set in stone. Depends on how many applications we get from homeowners or from businesses. And then from the incentive programs that we have in place where where we put in sidewalks at no cost to the builder or the homeowner. For the street reconstruction project, you've seen this this slide several times now, but it talks about the design. We coordinate this with the CIP program. So on the five-year CIP program, all of these dollar amounts match up for the utilities to be paid for out of the CIP program and then the general fund to be paid out of the street bonds. Again, the only change here from the last time you saw it was the push of the design for Crawford and Edwards from twenty-one to twenty-two due to funding. That's it. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Carrie.
Slated to speak after lunch and I'm thinking, great, everybody's going to be asleep. Then I get slated to go before lunch and not knowing they were going to bring lunch in while I'm going to be speaking here. So. Just real quick, I've been here next about what, week and a half will be my one-year anniversary. July eighth is the day I started here. It's been a heck of a year. I've told Judd that several things were not on my contract in reference to the things we've had to deal with. You know, take out about four months right now because of COVID. You know, I I came in here on a community policing-based form. It's tough when you need the community police, but you can't get out in the public. So our crime stats you won't see on this presentation, a presentation have stayed fairly level. We haven't seen a huge rise or or it dipped too much either. Right now, because of COVID, crimes of opportunity are the big ones. We're seeing an uptick in burglary of motor vehicles, thefts, things of that nature. So we'll know more about stats as the year starts to close down and we'll be able to give you a better outlook on that. Some of the things when I got here, Judd asked me to do really kind of an overview of when I got here, what's happened in the past year and where we're going. We condensed our mission, our mission statement. That's something, I'm sorry. You going to do that for me? You're awesome. We condensed our our mission statement to be something that we really need to live by. And that's the Dennison Police Department is committed to serving and protecting while partnering with our community to enhance public safety and the quality of life within the city. That's what we need to live by, each and every officer. We recently got some challenge coins and that mission statement is on that challenge coin. So it's very important. Our motto, we changed that to simply say protecting and serving. That sounds kind of cliche, but that's what we do. And that's what we need to be doing. More importantly, serving. That's our job. So and the values have stayed the same. Some accomplishments, we are getting new badges. COVID nineteen is wonderful at shutting everything down. So we should have had those about three months ago, but they will incorporate some history into the badge. It will be pre nineteen thirty-five badge within a badge. So we'll be proud to roll those out when we can. When I got here, we had about six different versions of uniforms. I had never played on a team that wore a different uniform. So we now all have the same uniforms. And I think, I'll tell you, we were the first in Texas to roll out this particular uniform. Blower is a uniform company that made the R, the RS, it stands for ripstop. Some hunters in here will know what ripstop is, but it's a very durable, light fabric. And we were the, one of the first, I believe the first in Texas to get it. We've gone to bi-weekly command staff meetings. That's where I meet with my assistant chiefs and Melissa because we call her Captain. Because she's the one that actually runs the joint. I have figured that out. But we, we, we talk bi-weekly in reference to projects, what we're doing, where we're going. We have a monthly supervisor meeting. That's when I bring in all the supervisors. Sometimes it's tough on those guys that work nights. But we bring them in, try to get their input, let them know if we're going to be making any changes, things like that. It's, it's good to get all of them together in a communication way because CID is bouncing stuff off of patrol. Patrol's bouncing stuff off of CID. So that's, that's always good to have. During my tenure, we've hired eleven officers. We've had some leave retirements, but we've, we've hired eleven. We've got two openings. When I got here, we had eight openings. We're down to two. We feel like our hiring process has been a success. We're hiring local generally. Folks that we feel are committed to this area and are going to stay in this area. So that's important. We've hired one part-time and two full-time dispatchers, promoted two lieutenants and four sergeants, hired one record specialist. And then we formed a shared leadership team. I talked about input and and collaboration with our officers. No supervisors in the room except me, which I don't know if that's good or not. I don't know if I'm intimidating. I hope not. But we pulled a group of officers and civilians from each section, from each shift. And we meet monthly to talk about what are their needs, what they think that we can do better. So I think that's important to get that aspect directly from the officers and civilian employees, not from the supervisors and be in a room where they don't feel like they can't say anything because their supervisor's there. It's very transparent. We restructured the administration lieutenant position. That's more of, he's over our records now. And and it says the next one down, we formalized an internal affairs process. He will also be taking care of our internal affairs. Before I got here, that was generally all lumped onto the chief. I don't think those things need to be in the chief's office. I think those need to be. If we have those kind of investigations, they need to be investigated by someone other than the chief. And then that information then then finalizes through the assistant chiefs and the chain of command really. We did transition from a SIG three fifty-seven to a Glock nine millimeter and everybody seemed real happy about it. To be honest with you, the SIG three fifty-seven is an expensive gun to shoot. The ammunition is 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 high and it's a rarity. Years ago, and that's kind of how it got started, DPS came out and started shooting the SIG three fifty-seven. So that became popular. It's kind of fallen off and we've transitioned back to the nine millimeter. And we, we reclaimed the camera trailer. Apparently when THF was built, there was a camera trailer. And unfortunately, when we had a fire down here downtown, we pulled the camera trailer out so that we could use it in reference to security measures around that area. So people weren't going in looting and so on and so forth. So we're looking to to use that more often now in reference to areas that we may have a problem or a high, a high crime area or something along those lines. Programs, we had a real successful and thank you, Sonny, National Night Out this year. And we hope to build on that. Sonny, we'd welcome you back if you'd come back and help us on that. I'm telling you, I'm not going to let you get out of my grip. So that was, that was good. I was actually in Virginia at that time, but I heard nothing but positive things about it. And we want to grow that even more. Some of you may have saw that we opened up the medical disposal program. CVS was kind enough to support us with a box. We went and put our logo on it. And now if you have prescription drugs that are expired, you can come up to the police department and drop them. That way they're not getting into our water system. They're not getting into the hands of hands of others, so that's a really good deal. Uh, because of COVID, we were kind of gonna stretch it out, but, uh, Josh, thank you, uh, we started our community online reporting. Uh, that was something that I had a vision for early on, but it, because of COVID, we were able to put that together. And now, um, for certain offenses, our citizens can go online and report those online. They are then viewed through a chain and, um, if it's something that we can investigate, we assign it to a detective and then it's investigated that way. Y'all may see, if you follow us on Facebook, the 9:00 PM check-in, that's reminding to lock your doors and get your valuables out of your car and turn your lights on, those kind of things. So, that's, that's been received well. Uh, also, because of the fire, we rolled out the decoy program. That's, we have some vehicles that are older and, um, that are not used often, so if we have a high-crime area, uh, which we don't have, uh, those things often, but if we were getting hit with burglary of motor vehicles in a certain neighborhood, we can go park that car in that neighborhood. That may keep somebody from thinking about doing that. We put them down here, we're in the fire again, to keep people believing that we were, obviously had security on site. During COVID, uh, we stuck one up at Walmart, which, you know, I, I don't know about y'all, but when I see a police car somewhere like a Walmart, I feel a little bit more, other than, maybe not y'all, but, uh, uh, when you see that vehicle, at least you know there's police officers probably on site. Um, Citizens of Police Academy, that's COVID-delayed. Um, that's really important for us to be able to push our narrative and to show folks what we do, especially right now, uh, with all the unrest that's going on around the country. Uh, as soon as we can get COVID under control, we really wanna, uh, bolster that program. That allows those folks to come in and see what we do and how we do it. Our recruitment's gone really well. Uh, Amy, um, Leach now, hard for me to say, uh, is really pushing, uh, our, our recruitment. So, like I told you earlier, we're getting good recruits. A lot of this stuff is, is obviously online, so the more that they can see online, the, the more they know about us. Our social media, I mentioned it earlier, Facebook has over 15,000 followers. I think it's even more at this point. I, it, isn't that what you were telling me, Sonny? So, that's, that's really important. Again, pushing our own narrative. We need to be telling people what we're doing. Uh, our school resource, uh, officer program, we put another s- school resource officer at BMAC this year, uh, which has been very successful, um, and they just, they, they just love Officer Riddick and Officer Hunt. That, it's, they, they do a great job. Also, this year, we started doing the school lunch with the cop program. A group of us, and I've, I've, I've also participated, we'll go to one of the local elementaries and have lunch with these young folks and that, uh, always brings a smile to their face. Uh, Citizens on Patrol, I know this program started prior to my arrival. I came from a department where we had a robust Citizens on Patrol. It's a volunteer, uh, situation. You have to go through the police, uh, Assistant Police Academy, but it would be great to see us really have a good push for that. You've seen them out helping at Music on Main, at the ballgames. It's just a set of eyes and ears that help us and, and when they're visible, it, it's a, a really good program to have. And then Coffee with the Cop. Again, that was something that was taking place, but we, we've had to shut it down, but hopefully we can get back to, to doing business. Technology and Josh, you know, me and top technology, so if I have to throw it to you. Uh, we upgraded our handheld radios in 2019, uh, upgraded Axon tasers. These tasers and radios, all these things really come to an end of life and so you, you're gonna have to upgrade them, uh, depending on what, what the product is ever so often. We upgraded our RMS CAD to ICS, uh, which we're hoping is gonna get better and worse. Uh, implemented Vesta Locate Text to 911, that's TCOG required. And we have a fingerprint scanner that we were able to receive that is in our jail now, so it, we don't have to take actual prints. It, it scans their prints in, so that's a pretty good deal. And, uh, 2020, we created a shift report, so that's, that, that technology's actually kind of a crime analyst tool as well. So, each shift, when they go off shift, the supervisor will put together a shift report in reference to any notable offenses that we, uh, had that day. So, if we have some BMVs that are being reported in a particular area, that next shift gets to see that and they can focus their attention on that. So, it's kind of an analyst-type tool. Uh, we added the talk-through speakers and records. Uh, when you walked in, um, they were having to scream through solid glass. They don't have to scream anymore and I don't have to hear it anymore, so that's a good thing. Uh, the next log update, auto recording for, uh, radios, admin lines in 911, uh, the GTAC MDTs, I think we had seven of them. Watchguard in-car cameras, uh, stationary video recording for DP units, uh, for PD units, I'm sorry. And watchguard server upgrade. Uh, we have a server for, um, the memory, so to speak, for our recordings. Uh, we upgraded handheld mics, handheld radios, and we put fingers, uh, fingerprint scanners on the MDTs and getting something, again, because of COVID, um, IT again assisting us in reference to easy ways and quick ways to be able to get signed on and not have to go through a bunch of logging on.
Chief, what's an MDT?
Mobile data terminal. It's a computer in a car. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, moving forward. Down the road, not right now, but I'd like to maybe look at doing an assigned vehicle program. Uh, there's a lot of, um, data out there in reference to improving crime, does it not, the money, so on and so forth, but really, if we can, it's all about public safety. And we talked about our presence in, in the community. You know, when, when, when cars are driving around, you know, people notice that, criminals notice that when they see, uh, a bunch of cars, police cars in town. So, the illusion may be that there's a whole bunch of us, when in fact, uh, it's just the fact that they may have an assigned vehicle and be driving back and forth to work or something along those lines. So, uh, it's to, the assigned vehicle program, it maintains high visibility throughout the city. It promotes the security of the citizens of Denison by greater visibility and presence of police vehicles on the streets, roadways and neighborhoods. Uh, acts as a deterrent to crime by limiting the opportunity of criminals to commit criminal acts by the presence of more police vehicles. To provide a quicker response to certain types of calls, thereby increasing the opportunity to apprehend criminals. To reduce maintenance costs for police vehicles and increase the life expectancy of the vehicle. When somebody has their own, uh, assigned vehicle, guess what? They take care of it better. Uh, it gets less miles put on it because right now, if you, we, we have these vehicles, they're running 24 hours a day. They're, they're, they never stop. If you have an assigned vehicle, um, you know, that is something where it's not running all day and they take, again, better care. There's stats out there that the less, less accidents occur in these vehicles. To reduce maintenance costs for police vehicles and increase the life expectancy of the vehicle. They were talking about how long could you keep a car? Well, right now, I think we're doing a lease for about four to five years, if that vehicle makes it that long. Sometimes the enterprise will turn around because of the mileage and the prime time for them to sell that vehicle and pull it. We haven't seen that yet, but that's coming because I think we're two years into our lease program. However, if you're able to buy or lease, lease a vehicle, buy ultimately, uh, we're seeing in some, um, some data projects that you can keep that car five, six to seven years. So, that keeps the cost of the vehicle, uh, and the maintenance and all the stuff that gets to go in these vehicles to include cages, light bars, all the other things that you see, so. Uh, to provide for a rapid and direct response of off-duty personnel when called to duty because of an emergency situation. Right now, and we've had a couple of incidents already, um, that officers had to come in. We had a barricaded person at one night where the entire shift was on the barricaded person while other officers were coming in. Well, they have to come in, grab a car or find a car, grab a car, then get into service so they could take calls. If you lived in the city of Denison, and that's what it would be restricted to, officers that lived within the city limits of Denison, uh, they could respond directly to anything. Uh, more effectively manage the department resources, uh, when you, you can check those cars more often and know that they're gonna be in better shape. And to provide an additional incentive for employees to maintain employment with the Denison Police Department through implementation of an assigned vehicle program. Retention. Opportunities here in Denison at our police department, we're fairly small. We don't have a whole lot of different units. You know, one of the things that, that we talk about is keeping our officers and not losing our officers to other locations. I think we're doing a good job of that now, but I, I tell you that, that, you know, ultimately recruitment and retention, uh, in reference to an assigned vehicle program is a, is a pretty big deal. Any questions about that?
So, how many additional vehicles does that entail?
Well, right now, it would be a bunch at one time, but we wouldn't do it at one time. We would phase it in, um, you know, and you'd use seniority. Um, basically, if you wanted, you know, a couple of cars at a time and you would use seniority and, and let those officers.
And maybe it would be an incentive to move to Denison.
Well, and that's something, you know, you're right, Mayor. I mean, you know, we're recruiting people, um, from outside the city locally. They live locally, but they don't live in the city limits. So, what do we, what are you getting? You're getting maybe two or three or four new citizens for the city of Denison and their, their taxes and all that other good stuff. You're right. I'm glad you noticed that.
And Chief has worked with our fleet department to, um, kind of put forth some different scenarios for how we could implement this, so we're gonna, we're gonna run those along with, uh, the rest of our fleet program and see what we can incorporate into the budget and look at this more.
Ultimately, thank you, Judd. Ultimately, you know, is there gonna be a cost savings? Um, if, if we're able to keep those vehicles longer, um, and, you know, that, that's, that's kind of what we need to focus on if there's a cost savings to this. Uh, Denison Police Department, moving forward, um, in the future, I would like to see us get a crime analyst. We, uh, do not have that here, uh, we need that here. That is somebody that can put all of the data together, point us in the right direction in reference to, okay, we've got a hotspot here, uh, or all those things combined, they can do, it's, 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 it's the mega detective really in a civilian capacity, uh, and, and putting out different, you know, bolos and different things of that nature. But, it's important that, that we here in Denison have that at some point, at some point. We, we depend on, uh, the county and Sherman quite often and I just feel like we need to have one in-house so we can take care of our own business. Public, uh, public safety assistant. You can't imagine how many people come into our police department to make reports. Uh, then we have our sex offenders that have to come in and get registered, uh, and checked out all the time. Uh, we would, I would like to see us down the road, employ a civilian employee that would take care of those type of actions. It would, it would make it a lot easier on our officers not having to come back and forth to the station. They could stay out there where they're visible and taking care of business while we have somebody that can take reports, that can take those sex offenders and register to them, can also do fingerprints. We have, right now, we, we've shut down the fingerprints, but when we go back to fingerprinting folks, they can do all that. So, it would just, it would just make it a lot more efficient and that's what we're after. Uh, and, uh, we're gonna need some more communication specialists. Right now, we are, we are flat and we've got just enough, we're full. But, what happens when one gets sick? What happens when, you know, then you're paying overtime? And so, I think we need to kind of, uh, bolster the, our communication specialists. And ultimately, down the road, we talk about police officers. We are growing. The national average would tell you that we're okay here. We've got 51 officers and that's one officer per thousand people. Well, do we really have 51 officers? We've got 51 officers, but how many are supervisors? How many are assistant chiefs? How many are detectives? So, how many are on the actual streets? Uh, our, our best deal is six and a supervisor, I'm sorry, five and a supervisor. Um, that, that doesn't happen often when they're full. Uh, I'd like to see us a little bit more, um, robust in our patrol, uh, cause that is the most important aspect of our police department is our patrol officers. It's the most visible arm of government. So, I would like to see that happen down the road. We need to be ahead of our growth, not trying to catch up to our growth. Equipment, um, that's always, that's always a, a deal with our budget. Our ballistic vests, especially, um, they've, vest, they, they expire every five years. So, we've kind of got a rotation right now where, and, and what I mean by expire, that means, um, if we leave an officer in a vest over five years, which I'm gonna tell you that it's, it's, it's a money-grabbing thing for the vest company, but, um, and that officer receives, uh, some kind of injury, they're not liable, uh, and, and that's, so we have to replace those. I told you earlier about the end of life on a lot of different kind of technology tasers, uh, that's always something that, um, they, they will tell you, uh, yeah, that's great and then they'll tell you after the fifth year or however many years it is, uh, yeah, you don't need to use that anymore because we won't cover it. I put police bikes and equipment on there. We talked about all of our parks and trails and I know that you all have seen us, we've had kind of a, a, a little bike unit here that's a voluntary thing and, um, we need to bolster that. Now, we were gonna buy some bikes and that, I'd actually put those in the budget, uh, but another department who had some basically lightly-used police bikes and equipment, some equipment, decided, uh, they would give that to us. So, we gladly took six almost brand-new bicycles from them and they're, we're, they're in the, uh, the basement at the police department. Uh, we will need some equipment to go with that to include uniforms, but I think it's important, we, we're fixing to put it out to our officers to see who might be interested because Katy Trail's coming and, you know, how, how are we gonna patrol Katy Trail? And I think the use of bicycles, uh, would be a great, uh, way to do that. It's also a PR thing. I mean, you've seen them down here when we have our festivals down here at Main Street, um, but, but it's, it's an easy way to traverse in and around the city. Uh, again, using it as a crime-fighting tool, if we've got an area that's getting hit, they're quiet, you can't see them and they can get in there and get out, so. Um, additional surveillance trailer down the road, I'd like to see us get another, uh, surveillance trailer. It's just nice to be out to pu- be able to put that out. If we're having issues at, um, Walmart with burglary of motor vehicles, we can put that out there. Uh, it is a deterrent to crime and if, should somebody commit a crime, that would be on video. And we're thinking about adding the automated license plate reader, uh, to our watchguard cameras. Um, there is a, a new product out that would be simply adding to our, our, our in-car cameras that when a vehicle drives by, it will tell you if it, uh, I, I know Eric's been putting stuff into region now, um, so it would tell us if that vehicle had an outstanding warrant out of Denison, uh, it would tell us if that vehicle was stolen, uh, those kind of things. It's just immediate information coming into that vehicle, into the car, uh, for the officer to be able to make those decisions. Uh, Denison, moving forward in reference to technology, our five-year plan, uh, body worn camera storage. Currently, we, our body worn cameras are Axon cameras and we pay an inordinate amount of money, uh, for storage. We have our own server in which we store, um, currently our in-car camera, uh, data on. We will be looking, uh, here shortly with watchguard to see if that could be a transition in the future so that we have our own server and we won't have to pay for storage because it's a bunch. Uh, next gen 911, it's a TCOG, uh, is, is required by TCOG, our emergency call tracking system. We're gonna have to renew that in three years. Again, replacing our body worn cameras, transitioning over to watchguard, something I just talked to y'all about. The ma- uh, the mobile data terminal replacements, uh, they have an end of life. The ticket rider replacements, again, end of life. And you can see, we've got the radio transition, uh, the, the repeaters and receivers, we're trying to, working with Josh again on, on having some better, um, I guess, communication tools throughout the city, uh, that would also include our fire department. And additional laptops and cameras in the jail. Uh, we still are using our jail and I'm glad that we do, especially right now, because, county is, is, obviously, the Grayson County's had, had an outbreak, so if we've got somebody, we can bring them into our jail, try to get them magistrate it out. Uh, it's a lot easier for us. And programs, uh, again, community policing is my thing. Um, I can't wait till we can get back to doing my thing, um, but working with IT, and I've talked about this a little bit, I'd like to do a community camera mapping system. That would be a voluntary program where if you have a home video system or if you have a video system at your business, that you could voluntarily sign up to let us know that you have those cameras. We would put that on a map, uh, and then if we have a criminal episode occur or something we are looking into, we could pull up that map, determine what cameras may or may not have been in the area and then reach out to those folks to see if we could use their footage to try to figure out if we can, uh, solve that crime or, or situation. Many of you know that here lately, we've, we've Many of you know that here lately, we've met with some of our city leaders and clergy in reference to some of the unrest that's taken place, and that's been a very positive thing, and I'm glad to have done that. My thought process all along and way back is maybe putting together a police and clergy coalition where, you know, who are the biggest leaders in your town? It's going to be your clergy. So I've thought about trying to put that together. I've actually talked to Chuck down at Southside Baptist and want him to get involved with it and try to pull as many pastors and folks together as we can and kind of see what that looks like down the road. Senior Safety Program. What I'd like to do is if we have, we have some older folks, obviously, here in Dennison, and, you know, sometimes we have to go to their calls, or the fire department has to go to their calls, and if we can't get them to the door, sometimes we have to get in somehow or another. The Senior Safety Program would simply be a voluntary deal. If you wanted to do part of this, you could give us a call, and we would go put a simple lockbox outside somewhere of your, outside your front door that has a key in, where it has, has an actual key to your house in it. So if the fire department or police department gets sent there, can't get you to the door. We had one yesterday where our officers had to go in through a window and unfortunately found somebody deceased. But that's an easier way to get in, and we don't damage people's property. Unidos, we already do have an Unidos program. That's a program, an outreach for our Hispanic population. I want to see us do that more. We've got two Hispanic officers that speak Spanish, and it's a great opportunity to be an outreach for those folks that need information, that may not trust the police. We need to really kind of pull them in. Shattered Dreams is a program I'd like to partner with the fire department and in the school district. They didn't get to do it this year, obviously, but around prom time, you know, we worry about drinking and driving. And it's basically just a simulation of an accident where you involve the police department showing up, the fire department, just a really live scenario. We could use our helicopter to come in, and it just really makes a difference. And it's a production's basically what it is, but just to have that on the kids' minds. RAD, the Rape Aggression Defense Class. If I can get somebody certified, I'd like to offer that to our ladies throughout town and make them feel a little bit, a little bit better in reference to the training to avoid those things happening. And our Crime Watch. I'd like to have some Crime Watch areas throughout the city. That's, that needs to be an organized thing, though. Certain neighborhoods that want to put that on, you'll have to, it'd have to be really kind of promoted at a larger level. But, you know, you've probably seen them when you go into certain areas, that they'll have those, this is a Crime Watch area, and we, we get the signs, and it's put up by us. Just this week, I reached out to the Boys and Girls Club. I think we, as a department, owe it to our young folks to get more involved with their lives, especially right now. So we're looking to have a larger affiliation with them. And again, we're going to continue to bolster our National Night Out since Sonny's going to come back next year and help us, so we're really excited about that. That can be a really good thing. Right now, we're doing it at a single location. We may look at it in reference to doing it in different districts, you know, and having different parties in different districts. You know, we can figure out how it needs to look down the road. Any questions? Well, let me tell you honestly, it's been an honor this year to be part of this community. It, it's different, and I'm not saying in a bad way. You know, a lot of the conversations that have been going on here lately, it's all about how we have more of, it's more of a community here. It really is. And within that community is what the word unity. And so I want to thank you all for having me, and I appreciate everything that you do for our city. And again, if you need anything, I'm always here, and we, as a department, are always here to assist you. So thank you.
Chief, what's, what's the morale like in your department?
It's, it's, I'm going to tell you something. We have a good culture, and I got a bunch of hard-working people that want to get out here and do their thing. Are they scared of the COVID? Well, yeah, probably some, but we still got to do our jobs. In reference to the other stuff that's taking place right now, it can be tough to hear all that. But again, I want you to know, we've garnered more support than we have, you know, hate. And so that's a big deal. When we got people bringing us food, and somebody came up the other day and bought 65, went to CJ's and bought 65, you know, gift cards for officers. I mean, those are the kind of things that we're seeing. We're not seeing a whole bunch of issues. Obviously, we had a peaceful protest that, or peaceful march that went very well. That was not unexpected, I suppose. So I think everything's, we're doing everything right. I think that they are in good spirits. They're ready for all this to get behind us so we can get back to business, really. And that's what it's all about, but thank you for asking.
Thank you so much, Chief.
You bet.
Well, you know what? We're about seven minutes ahead of schedule.